President Simon Holland.
Here.
Trustee Kelly has not made it yet. I'm going to check delayed in anticipation of him arriving. Trustee Minetto.
Here.
Vice President Raymond.
Here.
Clerk Taylor, I am here and our student should not be here but should be in class.
That's correct.
Madam President, we have a quarrel.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Cottle, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Trustee Cottle. J.J., let's call public comment, please.
I have none at this time.
All right, thank you. Is anyone else here who would like to make public comment who did not fill out a form yet? Okay. All right, we will move on to action to adopt the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Motion by Trustee Minetto is our second. Second by Trustee Cottle. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, now to the meat of our work session. Presentation by staff and discussion by the board regarding an overview of the estimated fiscal year 2018-19 general fund results, overview of the fiscal year 2019-20 budget and positions, initial trends for the fiscal year 2020-21 budget, and discussion of the possible budget process for fiscal year 2020-2021, and consideration of possible direction to the interim superintendent and staff. We have, as presenters today, Mr. Mark Mathers, our CFO, and Mr. Mike Schroeder, our budget director. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President, trustees. So we know how budget discussions can kind of be a little dry, so we thought, in honor of football season and the opening weekend, which was glorious, that Mike and I are going to try to work in some football metaphors. Maybe his presentation is spicy.
I heard through the grapevine that Mr. Schroeder was very upset by the last football game that the Wolfpack played in with Oregon. Just heard it through the grapevine.
It could be.
He was not the only one. He was not the only one. All right.
So today is essentially the kickoff or opening day of the fiscal year 21 budget session or season. I'm going to turn it over to Mike momentarily, but I first thought it would be important to lay out kind of the goals or our goals of today's work session. Really, the primary purpose of this meeting is that before we proceed with budget season, which will begin shortly, we want to make sure the budget process we lay out to you serves your needs and that staff and the board are using the same playbook. See what I did there? You know, in terms of the analysis and information we give you and how we communicate that information to you, I thought this last budget year was, you know, again, difficult given the size of the deficit we faced and given that we were in legislative session, but I thought we honestly could probably afford to improve, and I'm talking about staff, in terms of our communication with you. So we really are looking for your honest feedback about this last budget cycle, the fiscal year 20 budget process, and how we can improve for fiscal year 21. We're not going to be upset or hurt if you critique us along the way. But to set the stage for the discussion today, we realized first that three of you didn't have some of the benefit of the past efforts we made in the budget process, and basically you came into the game around halftime.
Oh, God. It's gonna...
It's just going to keep going and going.
It's already painful. Yeah, yeah.
But see, it's better. It's not as dry. And so at least some of you didn't have the benefit of knowing what we did in fiscal year 19, what we did in fiscal year 20. So Mike's first going to go through some of those past efforts to talk about what we have done, and we have a slide in it, and you saw it, I'm sure, but, you know, there were significant efforts. We cut more than $60 million out of the general fund budget over the last three years, but given where you kind of came in, that probably wasn't clear to you, and it probably wasn't clear to you why we were kind of using some of the techniques we were. So we thought we'd go through that as kind of background for you as quickly as we can. And then Michael turned it over to me to talk about kind of different budget philosophies and what we can do this budget season. But again, the idea here is really to open it up to you to talk about what you'd like to see to react to what we were going to lay out for fiscal year 21. So with that, I will turn it over to Mike.
Thank you, Mark. Good afternoon. President Simon Holland, members of the boards, interim superintendent McNeil. As Mark said, we're kind of in our preseason right now, just starting things off. A good way to look at things is go back to last season and see what the heck did we do there and how can that affect what we're doing?
We're not going to watch videos, are we?
I've got some good slow-mo stuff here.
Exactly.
I got it ready.
But if you look at it, we started about this time last year, and there's kind of different circumstances. Last year, we knew we had a bigger structural deficit. We were trying to resolve that by the fiscal year 21. It was a legislative session. There was a lot of uncertainties. This year, it's a little bit different. We're through the legislature. There's a little more certainty about the numbers and things like that, and we'll talk about that as we progress. But it kind of started out last year with the same thing, kind of a budget 101. Talked about initial transfer fiscal year 20, like we're going to talk about today. Now, there's quite a gap there, five months. Didn't mean we weren't doing anything. We had done a lot of new process, our priority-based budgeting, and that involved a tremendous amount of work between a lot of different staff, formulating programs, costing those out, prioritizing those, scoring them, and doing a big summary. And based on that, we did some budget surveys, a budget survey, and we had a number of community forums that we presented, the PBB results and some of the budget survey results at that. And we've kind of brought all that together at that February workshop, and we did bring some other analysis. And a big part of that workshop, we talked about the results of the priority-based budgeting process. Then, March 12th, we talked more about priority-based budgeting. There were a number of items in there that felt like those are areas we could really look at and reduce the budget because we were trying to resolve a structural budget deficit. Those were items that seemed a little more like no brainers, less palatable or more palatable to be reduced and not harm a lot of things. We looked at our fund balance because that's a board policy. We're trying to reach an eight to 10% fund balance for the general fund, and presented some additional budget reduction options. And we had to file a tentative budget by April 15th. We brought a proposed tentative budget about April 9th, and at that point, we put a 3% COLA in the budget with the hope that, working with the legislature and the governor, we'd be able to resolve all that by the time we got to the final budget. And at that point in time, we were about $17.8 million deficit. Then on March 28th, we filed, we met to finalize a final budget. The legislature was still in session. Still didn't really know how that was all going to work out, but we did bring forward some numbers based on some of the legislation that was happening around a textbook waiver, some additional grants that maybe could offset some of our general fund costs, refined our revenues, and ended up filing a final budget that had about a $7.9 million deficit. Then the legislature finally ended. A lot of good things happened, and through all that, we were able to file an amended final budget that was structurally balanced. Most of that came through per pupil funding and some revisions to what we thought our health insurance costs would be and a little more based on some of the grant funding that So basically, the good part was the box down to the lower right, second level, there's just kind of a blank in there. And what that means is we have a structurally balanced budget. The revenues are equal to the expenditures, and there's no deficit. So we were able to achieve our goal of a structurally balanced budget one year earlier. And the other important aspect here is that the ending fund balance was projected to be about $35 million, which is 7.2% of expenditures, which is a little lower than your eight to 10%, but it's getting there and it's pretty close. Because we kind of got into a lot of budget reduction stuff, and we didn't get into a lot of the details of the budget, when we present the budget, we do it in categories that are prescribed by the Department of Taxation. So there's local, state, federal sources, and kind of functional and program sources. We can carve up the numbers a lot of different ways. Essentially, we had a $488.3 million general fund budget. And what this does is, just a different way to look at that, to give you as the board a little broader context of how the money's spread out, and this is just a summary by chief or executive leadership team member. And it's just broken out salary benefits, purchase services, other common broad categories that we break the budget out into. You can look at this several ways, bottom line numbers, salaries, 278.8 million benefits, 122.5 million. That's about 82% of our budget, but the column over there with transfers, 45 million, that's all our transfer to the special education fund, which essentially really is paying for salary and benefits. So when you combine that, this budget has a little over 91% of our budget directed towards salary and benefits. Then you can look at it a different way, kind of vertical or linear, and you see that most of the spending is around the area superintendents. And the reason for that is because under each area superintendent, there are a number of schools. Schools have our most employees, so most of those are the teachers, principals, office staff, custodians, counselors, things like that. So those make up a big chunk of our budget. And obviously, down at the bottom, this undistributed, which is kind of a weird name, but most of that you see is the transfer to the special ed fund. And other parts of that are salary and benefits that we house at the district level related to, like, sick leave, vacation payouts, overtime, extra duty pay, things like that, that aren't really distributed amongst the chiefs. And what we did also, we're not going to get into it right now because we want to get through this and try to really look at the budget approach we're going to take for the next fiscal year, but we put together a book for you, and it's really taken this $488 million general fund budget plus the $77 million special ed budget and putting it into all the budget accounts that we have for the entire district. And it breaks it out by each of these chief executive leadership team members. And if you look at it, there's a lot of detail. There's over 550 pages, and there's a lot of accounts and a lot of detail, but it's just to show you how big the budget is and how far spread out it is, but a better idea of what happens within each of these executive leadership team members. And if we have time at the end, we'll walk you through that so you get a really good feel for it, but we kind of want to get towards the budget process first. Any questions so far?
Questions? Okay. Everyone's still awake?
We better get back to some football, so... What we want to do is talk about transfer next fiscal year. Once again, it's really early. We're in our preseason, as we say. We're just getting warmed up. We haven't put all of our plays in. We don't know everything that's going to happen yet. We haven't ran game film on the opponent to see where we can up our strategy, but there are some things we do know about, and we can start formulating some of the game plan right now. And first of all is enrollment is a key driver of what we do, and it's been flat for over three years. So it's been kind of troublesome because we typically have grown, and being flat makes you wonder what's happening, and it's hard to budget. It's easy to budget and help offset deficits if you're getting new revenues, but when it's flat, you're not really growing, and it doesn't really help you that much. But we're seeing some positive trend here in the current fiscal year. Right now, it's about 0.25% more than it was last year. I know that's not a lot, but at least it's positive now, and when we are able to look at that and move into fiscal year 21, maybe that'll be a little better and help us out Some of the other things we know, we can make some assumptions. Ad valorem tax, we can say hopefully we'll grow by 5%. I mean, the cap typically is 3% on residential properties, plus there's a lot of new growth that gets put onto the rolls. So 5% there, hoping government services, taxes continue to grow. We do know what our DSA per pupil is. Based on the law, it's going to be $50 more. That's only 1% increase over what it currently is. I mean, our rollups are more than 2%, so we get back into that same old situation where these recurring, ongoing revenues or new revenues really aren't keeping up with the ongoing expenses. That number will get adjusted based on the revised ad valorem taxes. We don't know what that is yet. That probably won't happen until late March of 2020. There is some special education revenue that was passed by the legislature, an increase for the next fiscal year. We assume we'd probably get a portion of that also. So you look at new revenues, then it's like, okay, what do we know about expenditures? We know we're opening to new schools. We have a middle school and an elementary school. Typical cost between those two is about $2.8 million. We do have salary rollups for our employees. Until we get a better trend on health insurance, typically it goes up every year, so we're assuming the 5% right now. That could be more, could be less. This is one of those things that'll pan out over time, and we'll get a little better trend on it. Right now, we have a textbook adoption cycle. Up next is K-5 science, kindergarten through fifth grade, and science textbooks typically cost more. This textbook purchase would be about $5.2 million. We have about $3.2 in the budget, so that would be an increase of about $2 million. Property insurance, those come to the board every year. You see the annual ones. They've gone up almost $1 million. So we had some retained earnings, fund balance in our property and casualty fund that had absorbed that over the last year or so, but when we get to fiscal year 21, we're going to have to address that. I'll skip the position contingency. That was for some positions that were supposed to be reduced in the current year, but those will wait till fiscal year 21. And typically, as our employees turn over from year to year, we see resulting savings. We estimate that to be about $2 million. And we think now that we've got these grants in place, the new grants, there are some additional savings to the general fund that'll help us out. But if you added up all this right now, we'd be looking at a little over a $4 million budget deficit. Once again, there's a lot of unknowns. There's a lot of things we still have to do. There'll be a lot of refinement, but based on piecing together some known information, that's kind of where we're sitting right now. So what are some of these uncertainties? Obviously, we talked about enrollment. That could impact us positively and help us out. We still are negotiating with all our bargaining units. Remember, in the fiscal year 20 budget, we had reduced ESIP. That has to be negotiated. We haven't finished those negotiations yet. We talked about health insurance a little. Hopefully, we'll get a lot better trend on that and see where we're at when we get closer to the tentative budget and things like that.
Yes. Thank you, Madam President. Just for the public, will you define ESIP? Mike, please.
Yes, Early Separation Incentive Program. We had reduced the fiscal year 20 budget by $1.2 million for that, and that has to be negotiated. We're still in the process of negotiating that. Utility costs are always an unknown. Gasoline prices, if they go up, that can really impact our budget quite a bit. And there's a lot of talk about recession. We don't know what's going to happen for sure, but that can obviously impact local revenues, government services taxes, investment earnings. Sales tax, which is supposed to be offset by the state, but back in the great recession when that started, it's normally a guarantee. If we don't, if our sales tax doesn't come in, the state makes that up, but that was so great that the guarantee went out the window, and we had to reduce budgets back then. So it's supposed to be a guarantee, but depending on if something really bad happens, you never really know. And property tax, typically because of abatements, that one won't be impacted quite as much if there was a recession. So those are some of the uncertainties and some of the things we know about, just a general idea of where we sit right now. Obviously, there's still a lot of work to do. We were sitting at this point last year and ended up with a balanced budget, so... But that's what we want to talk about. How do we get to that point, and how do we want to get there?
No questions so far?
Nope.
All right. So we're going to kind of turn the page and talk about how do we, again, assemble the budget and what are different approaches, different agencies have used to prepare and formulate budget changes and what we have done to kind of, again, bring especially the new members kind of up to speed on what we've done and why we ended up with priority-based budgeting as a solution in our situation. So this is very dry. I will try to go through it quickly, but kind of the, this slide kind of covers, again, different processes, different budget philosophies, if you will, in terms of preparation of an annual budget. And kind of the traditional approach government agencies have used is a line item budget, and that's essentially what this is. You'll notice for each and every office, there are department budgets underneath, and then you will see specific object codes by specific expense and a budget and expenses. And we do use that. We do track that. That's how we do budget that way, and we track expenses that way, so you can know with a great deal of granularity where our expenses are. That, kind of, the con of that is you somewhat lose the forest for the trees. It's very difficult to get your arms around a 500-plus-page document and make kind of strategic decisions about that agency's budget. And kind of what happens many times is governments, then by using that line item budget only, engages in what we call incremental budgeting. They are nibbling around the edges. So if they get $2 million more in funding, they haggle over and talk a lot about, how are we going to allocate that extra $2 million among departments, even when that $2 million, say, is a very small percentage of the overall budget? So rarely do they look at the entire budget of the organization and reassess how our resources allocated. It's really all about that increment. Usually, the incremental additional revenue when times are good or when times are bad, okay, we've got to reduce our budget by a million. And so again, they'll look in kind of the edges a little bit and kind of reduce incrementally to get to that target budget. Again, not a lot of reassessment of how resources are allocated, and so you end up with a budget that looks very much the same as the prior year budget. And that is the traditional approach used by most agencies. Just a couple other different processes along the way, and new budgeting processes do pop up, you know, every so often, and they become, sometimes they're a fad, sometimes they stick. A different approach is program budgeting that tries to break up that departmental budget into major programs, so you can see what is the agency trying to accomplish, you know? What are those major programs? And those can cut across departments, kind of just a different way to look at your budget, but more focused on outcomes and deliverables and what are the major functions of an agency. And so, you know, that was, you know, popular a number of years ago, and there are some real value to doing that. Priority-based budgeting takes it kind of one step further. It breaks up that budget into, again, programs, but then scores those programs, as we saw last budget cycle, against the strategic goals of the agency. So now, not only are you breaking up your budget by program, but you're kind of assessing that relevance to the strategic plan so that, again, it's a framework for a system, a more systematic approach to how you look at your budget and determine where will I cut or where will I want to reallocate resources to. And so, again, as Mike said, and as you know, we spent hundreds of hours involved in that process. I thought there was some real benefit to it and real value to it, both for individual managers and then more globally, looking down from the top. But again, it's a very intensive process. Essentially, what it asks you is, if I had the budget to do all over again, what would I want my budget to look like? That is essentially what it's getting after. Where do I invest resources? You know, another budgeting approach that kind of is more popular, has become, kind of talked about more lately, is budgeting for outcomes, and this tries to get departments and agencies to look at their budgets in terms of actual outcomes and deliverables, and what does it cost to deliver that particular outcome? So it's not so concerned on inputs and outputs, but what are we trying to accomplish and how do we get there? And that, for local governments, can be a real paradigm shift and helpful in terms of spurring innovation. So this gets to, I don't care how you deliver that outcome, just what, you know, what's the most cost-effective way to deliver it? Sometimes can encourage innovation or experimentation about, okay, if our point is to get people off the welfare role, what is the best way to get there? And maybe the traditional approach, for instance, for that county government, doesn't work as effectively as a different approach. So that, right now, is, you know, very popular. What it means is a lot of quantitative metrics and a lot of calculations and work to give you quantifiable figures for, again, those outcomes. So again, it's a very intensive process.
Mark, I see the question, does this apply well to school districts? Are there school districts that you know of that are... I mean, this would be really hard to do, I think, in academic...
Yeah, I don't personally, and I'm kind of drawing upon, you know, my local government experience more when talking about this. Then I'm not familiar with a school district that's tried this. So, yeah.
It's sort of the Augenblick study drilled down to a program or a department of the school district, and that would be...
Yeah.
...really an amazingly gargantuan task.
Right. And then the last budgeting approach that you may have heard of, this actually, I think, began in the Carter administration long ago, is zero-based budgeting. And this was an attempt, again, to reassess what an agency does, and it tried to look at every agency's budget, ask, what do you do, and reassess, should we keep doing that? And then built that budget up from the ground floor. So reanalyzed and relooked and reassessed and grilled departments about, do you really need this cost? And, you know, kind of, again, rather than incremental approach, required departments to re-justify their expenses. You know, the more recent legislature talks about how, again, intensive this process is, and, you know, the best practice right now is if you're going to do that, to do that on a rolling basis, you pick a couple departments a year, because, again, it's so intensive, there's no way you can do this on an annual basis with every department. It's an interesting approach. I think PBB, priority-based budgeting, kind of overlaps this a little bit, and again, it's trying to re-justify programs and what we do, but this is a more cost accounting approach, again, to re-justify one's expenses.
Mark, one other question. Is there out there something that blends, here's what our priorities are, but here's how well we're doing at them? That blends the sort of performance side of it with, you know, here's what's important to us, and here's where, here's how we're performing in that, and maybe, you know, one of the considerations is, well, maybe we need to invest more resources in something that's highly important, but our performance is low? Just, I don't know if...
It is a great question. To us, that was one of the, I don't want to say flaws, that's too strong of a word, but one of the shortcomings of priority-based budgeting. It asks, how important is this versus this? But as you're saying, it really does engage how cost-effectively we accomplish that program. But I think that's where that process is going, but again, it would mean a lot of effort in terms of looking again at your outcomes or your deliverables and developing those metrics, which isn't impossible. So I think that's where it's going, and that was a good question and one where those among the peer group scoring programs struggle too, to say, well, yeah, it's important, but it's not doing it very well, so what do we do about it? But the scoring process of PBB itself didn't allow those conversations... But the scoring process of PBB itself didn't allow those conversations to be brought in. So that is, that is a path we could go down in the future.
I, you know, certainly as one trustee, my sense is that that's something that the public looks to us to be validating is, so what's the return on investment of something that's a high priority for us? Are we, are we getting the bang for the buck that, you know, that the public wants us to? And I, you know, I know that would be a very, very time-intensive process. And maybe that's something we do on a rolling basis. Don't know. Just throwing it out there.
So somewhat similarly, we put together this chart that kind of asked the question, well, when you have to cut? How do local departments, local governments, including school districts, know where to cut? Right? And frankly, a lot of times, it's not very systematic. And so in the first kind of row here, we talk about, these are kind of ad hoc decisions. These are, a lot of times, expert judgment. And so, and that's what the school district has done often, is to go to chiefs, who then go to the department managers, who then might go in down another level to ask, gee, where do you think we can cut with the least amount of impact? Or, again, what program maybe, you know, has a little fat? And so forth. And so it really, I call it ad hoc, but it's really kind of expert judgment. And this is kind of a top-down approach. Again, not terribly systematic, but it's very common. Again, in that you're going to the subject matter experts and asking them, where do you, where do you think you can cut or not? And so, you know, that becomes then subject to, you know, some gamesmanship and, you know, people jockeying for their favorite programs and so forth.
It's also a place where we, in organizations, will often get caught up with sacred cows. There are the untouchable things that, that nobody will cut. And sometimes those sacred cows are things that we, we need to take a critical look at.
Right.
But that's a, this is an internally focused process and it doesn't necessarily include customers in that
Right.
review and so.
Yeah, very good point. It is not outward-looking. It is not asking for stakeholder input necessarily. Another approach, very popular, this can be effective, certainly in terms of generating figures to, in a deficit situation, but are across-the-board cuts. Where either one single percentage cost reduction number is given to departments, i.e. cut 5% out of your budget and they go do that. Or you can use tiered cuts to say, okay, for these functions, say, public safety in a city, I don't want to cut that much. You know, you have to cut 2%, but every other department has to cut 10%. See, you know, you can do different approaches here. And you can see the pros and cons to that as well. But a very common approach. And then, as you know, last year, again, we went through a priority-based budgeting process that, again, tries to look systematically. And again, I think you could critique how systematic it is, but tries to look at systematically, where are higher priority programs based on management's assessment of those programs? Not based on business and finance assessment, but based on management's assessment of their own programs, which are higher priority and which are lower priority. And so this would tell you, you know, ideally, you would want to reallocate dollars away from lower priority programs or ancillary services and reallocate them to higher priority programs or core services. But again, it doesn't ask how effective one's doing that. And maybe even a lower priority program is very lean and very effective in what it does. It didn't ask that question. It didn't ask, gee, of the higher priority programs, are they being done well, if you will? I.e. in a, in a cost-effective, efficient way. So this is not by any stretch a comprehensive list of how one would reduce a budget, but just wanted to give you some kind of typical examples of how local governments do that. And so, again, kind of for recap, for our new members especially, what have we done? Well, back in fiscal year 19, before three of you were on board, we did a very detailed review of where departments had spent their operating budgets, not personnel budgets, but the non-personnel budgets. Where had they spent those budgets and where had they not spent their budgets? And so we looked at a three-year history. And if a department consistently underspent a budget or did not spend their budget, we swept it. Now, that was a conversation we had with the department managers. So it wasn't a complete top-down process. It was, gee, we've noticed in this budget account, you always underspend $100,000. Is there a reason why that's the case? And if there wasn't a good reason, you know, those monies were swept. That generated $5 million in savings. So it was a significant result. And again, it was done in conjunction with departments. They were told, you know, they were given that analysis and asked about it. When they could defend why they might not have spent it, it wasn't swept. But again, what we were trying to do is get a better alignment of our budget to actual expenses. What we had seen is, frankly, we had over-budgeted certain expenses. And that's why our budget oftentimes showed a deficit that was far larger than our actual deficit. So we're trying to get our budget to reflect reality better, and this was one of the key things we did. Similarly, we looked at our salary savings. We know we always have vacant positions. For an organization this large, you can't have every position filled every day of the year. And so the reality is, we'll have salary savings and we chose to incorporate those salary savings into the budget. That was another $4 million off of the budget. And so I got to be candid here with you. Different agencies have different approaches here. Some agencies do not account for salary savings when they prepare their budget. And therefore, they always have a surplus at the end of the year. Other agencies do account for salary savings and vacancies in their budget. It's just a different budgeting approach and philosophy. And given where we were at, we wanted to do that, again, to bring actual results closer to our budget. We certainly have gone through a process where we went out to manage, management and the budget office oftentimes has their, has their own particular thoughts about what could be reduced. And so another approach we use, we're just ad hoc, kind of top-down ideas. And when I say top-down, that doesn't necessarily mean the chief, but it probably meant a department manager or someone who's responsible for division. So we, again, many times in the past, fiscal year 18, fiscal year 19, went to managers to, again, say, what could you cut with the least amount of impact? So we've used that approach. We also, in fiscal year 19, and so for the new members, they didn't get to see this, which is probably an oversight on our part, we used the Government Finance Officer Association's Smarter School Spending Tool. This looks at school districts and sees how and where they budget dollars. And then you can key in that information online to compare where your particular school district budgets in a number of very discreet areas. So maintenance is one area, for instance, counseling's another. And you key that information in and it'll quantify, okay, you are budgeting for X number of counselors per thousand students versus the average of your peer agencies. And so that's something we did in fiscal year 19, not last year, but 19. Certainly, at the request of the board or sometimes on our own, or sometimes based on internal audit reviews, we looked at very special issues. And I think this was really valuable. So some of those were the take-home vehicle issue, where we used to have take-home vehicles that managers had, and those are gone now. Last budget cycle, we looked at athletic transportation fees to increase those fees. We're still not recovering 100% of our costs. We talked about, though, how that's legitimate not to do that. But that was another special issue we looked at. And then lastly, as you know, we use priority-based budgeting. So I just, I know this is maybe ancient history, but I wanted to go over it because we really didn't talk about it last year. And maybe some of you were wondering, how did we end up with the process we ended up? And so we kind of went through all of these processes and, you know, the more you do them, there's this law of diminishing returns, right? So you, you go to the well for kind of that ad hoc, expert judgment kind of view of what you can cut. And the first year you do it, you know, it's a lot of money. And then every subsequent year, you're just cutting further, further into the bone. And that's kind of the pattern we've been in, where we kind of maximized each of these tools to the extent we could. Actually, and these next two slides are examples of where we identified areas that we had a lower cost than our peer group from, for that cost benchmarking, and then where we had a higher cost than our peer group. The point of this is not to say Washoe County School District is doing it right or wrong or other agencies are doing it right or wrong. It's simply to point out where we may invest more than our peers in certain areas and less than our peers in other areas. Again, to guide us in those conversations about where we might go in terms of reducing costs. And so by using, yes, sorry.
Just going back to slide 19. What are the California peer school districts? Are they similar enrollments?
Yeah, we, we looked at school districts with an enrollment over 40,000 and under 100,000. And there were about a dozen California school districts in that, maybe 15, a dozen to 15 school districts in that area that we thought were close enough to us that has 64,000 students.
It would be interesting to look at student achievement comparisons
Right.
with the same group
Right.
and to see, you know.
And of course, California school districts get a lot more money than Nevada school districts. So there's always limitations when you start comparing yourself and benchmarking yourself to other agencies.
But it's interesting that we would have lower class sizes and more staff when we have so much less funding.
Right.
It's very counterintuitive.
We're paid less, right?
Yes.
That's a part of it. So by virtue of using all of these tools, you know, I want to toot the board's horn here a little bit. This wasn't easy. This is something President remembers. We shared with the governor when we met with him in March or April. It's not like we've been sitting on our hands doing nothing. We, and not that he had that impression, but we want to make sure he understood, there have been significant reductions to the general fund budget. And we tallied them up and categorized them, you can see here. But it has been more than $60 million over the last three budget cycles. So I think we've been very successful in identifying reductions and ideas and ways to get to a balanced budget one year early. And you all know that wasn't easy. So it's not like we haven't been successful in using these approaches. I think we really have. But again, we're faced in fiscal year '21 with the possibility of further reductions. And so let's talk about fiscal year '21 a little bit again.
Before we go on, are there any questions or comments, trustees, just before we go on to the next? Okay?
So I think the first thing, again, to make sure we are on the same game plan, is to ask you to reaffirm and confirm that the budget policies that were adopted in 2018 and there were significant budget policy changes, you still want to follow. And so the, and we attach those budget policies as part of our staff report. But again, the, you know, the major thrust here is that we will have a structurally balanced budget by fiscal year '21. We talked about how we beat that by a year, but we're challenged for fiscal year '21 again. We wanted to have an available ending fund balance of 8% to 10%. The budget showed a 7.2% ending fund balance, but that assumed we would have an actual deficit in fiscal year 19 of $4.5 million. I'm confident in saying we won't have that big of a deficit. And so we will be within that 8% to 10% range headed into '21, is my firm belief. But, but again, that was a new budget policy of the board. Previously, we had talked about unassigned ending fund balance of 2%, which just isn't really viable. The budget policies you adopted calls for a long-term financial plan once we have a structurally balanced budget. And so we are working on a long-term financial plan. It required greater public engagement, which we've done with the budget survey and community forums. It requires additional monthly and quarterly reporting to you. And it required, when we introduce new programs, that we have sunset reviews or evaluations of those new programs to make sure those new programs are delivering. The budget policies also talk about avoiding incremental budgeting and reexamining how we spend. And it talked about having a data-driven process. There's a lot there. I remember I got quite into the weeds, those policies, but it was important at the time to do so. So I wanted to first confirm that you all still see value in those policies and want to abide by those policies as we embark on this budget process.
Trustees, lots of nodding. I know we have to be a bit flexible about the ending fund balance target. You know, I'm very much in favor of a minimum 8% because it's, you know, it's essentially one month's operating cash, operating expenditures, which is not a lot. But we also know the realities of our situation make that policy difficult to achieve in some years. And it will be difficult to achieve in 2021 if we don't change something. So just, that's the one that, you know, is the hardest for me to make it an absolute. And for me, it's not, it's, we can't make it an absolute.
Okay. So I'm going to start turning it over to you, but some of our ideas then for fiscal year '21 budget process. We'd like to start having an earlier dialogue with departments. And after this meeting, based on your direction, we'd like to start doing that. And two years ago, I think we had a better dialogue with departments. We had a series of meetings with departments to talk through ideas and share data and go back and forth. Last budget cycle was much harder to do that, given the size of the deficit, the new priority-based budgeting process that we embarked on. So it was more of a paper-driven process, and I think that didn't work so well at times. And so we, I think this is kind of a mom and apple pie idea, but want to, again, have more interactive dialogue with departments as we strategize about possible reductions. Our second idea is, you saw that we have increased textbook purchases. We've reached out to those areas to talk about ways perhaps to spread out those costs over two years. And there's some, I think, operational value to doing that, but we're having those discussions. And so that's a thought to help provide budget relief in fiscal '21.
How, how would that work? I mean, we want to be able to roll out new textbooks throughout the district at the appropriate grades. How would that work to spread that over two years? Oh, we punted to you, Mike.
We, we need our assistant curriculum coach. No, I, they've indicated it might even be better, but they could give you more specifics. But that will be one of the things we're coming forward with. We don't know exactly how we're going to do it, what we're going to present, but it's one of the things we're looking at. And obviously, that would be taken into consideration because it's, you know, we need textbooks that are current and modern.
Okay. Yeah, especially in science. Trustee Cotto.
Thank you. Did we ever hear back about the outside-the-box thinking you had on purchasing textbooks? I think, what, using capital? Did we ever hear back from NDE on that?
We're still having conversations on that issue. And again, these are just ideas, you know, that we're throwing out. We'll come back to you with details on these ideas. Another idea that we've had is kind of a leadership team is to explore what we call different service delivery models or providing basically principals greater flexibility on certain allocations of certain positions. Not teacher positions, but are there other positions where we have fixed allocations where it may be advantageous to them to be able to increase the number of hours? For instance, our IT folks work at the schools and reduce hours of other positions. Again, just on the very front edges of those conversations, we don't know where that would go, but that has the ability to at least be with their dollars, if not perhaps generating some savings. But the idea more is just to do more, more with the same amount. So that's an idea we're kicking around currently. And that would definitely require stakeholder input and feedback. And then, and then the last, you know, topic would be... And then the last, you know, topic would be another major round of party-based budgeting or refresh of that because we, again, know we were learning in that first round and we could do things better. And so does that, again, yield some result? Do that again?
I know on the efficiencies conversation, you know, I know departments are always looking for ways to continuously improve and, you know, I know I've had conversations with Dr. McNeil and others about sometimes it's hard for us to find the efficiencies when we've been staring at the same need to reduce money in this particular program for year after year after year. And the notion of how we can, how we can stimulate creative continuous improvement and how can we find process improvements or efficiencies or cost savings or quality improvements for the same cost. And I know, you know, we've, we've been talking about employee suggestion programs and perhaps teams that would look at idea management of, you know, here's an innovative idea, let's look at it with the interdisciplinary team of stakeholders. I'm really hopeful that we will get some closure around moving forward with some of that soon because it will take time. And we only have, I mean, our calendar, we're September already, and we need to really, in earnest, have some budget projections, you know, by February and March. I mean, we just, we just don't have a lot of time. So I'd really encourage us to, encourage staff to get some closure around what are we going to do about how we find new efficiencies in our organization and tap into, as we heard from an employee yesterday, and trustee Cottle was there as well at North Valley's High, you know, how do we tap into the, to the good ideas that our employees have, but how do we tap into looking at the same thing over and over and finding a new way to do it that saves money? So anyway, just want to really encourage that. Just as one trustee, there were things that you all found that were ways you could improve on priority-based budgeting. I would not personally support doing a complete, another round of priority-based budgeting. I don't think that things change enough in a year to make that worthwhile, but if there are parts of it that you could utilize or things that you found that, you know, might be ways to improve a particular component, you know, I would certainly encourage that. But just as one person, I would, I would say we hold off on the full round of priority-based budgeting because things will not have changed that much in a year. Other thoughts? Trustee Cottle?
Yeah, I would agree with that. I know, speaking as an individual who showed up in January in the middle of the process, and what I heard a lot from staff and the priority-based budgeting, when staff saw the results, they would look around and go, who came up with this? Like, no one asked me. And so I think that would be a nice change of pace in the second year from priority-based budgeting to then go to the staff and say, okay, so what ideas do you have? I think that there's a, there's a push within our district and a desire from staff to be heard, and I think we heard that in the priorities-based budgeting round. And so I would say that would be a really good thing to, to tap into their, their thoughts and their expertise and, and how they see things operating on the front lines. And I think it would really help the board, chiefs, those towards the top of the organization to have a different perspective on what is happening on a day-to-day, so.
Dr. McNeil?
I'll just quickly add, I mean, and I think Mr. Mathers has done a great job explaining that. I think part of the issue too has been the, the definition of what a program is. And I know that this was a first year for priority-based budgeting throughout our district. And so I think the more that we can reduce angst and anxiety out there in the field as far as what those programs are and what they're scored at, the better off we're going to be.
Vice President Raymond?
Thank you. And I completely agree in terms Superintendent McNeil. I think I had more conversations kind of around that angst from the staff perspective than anything. And it wasn't even so much, I did hear a little bit about who came up with it, but it was more, you know, so I fall as low priority. What does that mean? You know, and we had so many conversations and continue to have so many conversations about morale, and there are certainly things that we're doing to help, I think, correct that. But I do see that, I think this process unknowingly played a role in some of the morale issues, I believe, because it did hit sort of low priority versus high priority, which really did boil down to positions. I mean, we saw that when we kind of went through the last round of budgeting, that the program was labeled as a low priority, but the budget, when you boil down to it, the number was a position. And that, you know, causes then someone to feel that my position is a low priority, my place in this organization is a low priority. And I don't know how we, you know, avoid that word priority since it's priority-based budgeting, but it did, I think, feel like, and I think, actually, Mark, you acknowledged it in our first sit-down, that it was, you know, our first attempt at this, and there are things we can improve upon. And so I would just see that as an area that I would like to see kind of some shift. And I think the involvement of staff will help with that, that if they are more a part of the process from the beginning and understanding, but I still think what it boils down to, and I don't know that that would change in any of our, of the other budgeting options, but it boils down to people because that is our largest.
To trustee Cottle's comments and yours, because I think you're spot on. I think, first, I think there is an opportunity for staff to have more input, and so we did talk to the associations after the process, and we talked about the peer groups that really, again, review department scores, need to include line staff, right, and the people on the ground. So I think I would absolutely agree with that, that, and I think what you've seen in the approaches we've taken is it is more top-down. And so there is an opportunity, as the president was saying, maybe we've kind of utilized that and we need more bottom-up kind of approach and a different set of eyes to it. I would agree with that. Going to your points, I think you're spot on, and this board was put in a really difficult situation where you were staring down the barrel of a gun, looking at seventeen million dollars in reductions. And as you just said, ninety percent of our budget's personnel. So how do you get there from here? And, and we all talked about how excruciating it was, and this became a policy discussion. And I would agree with you, no matter what system you use to look at your budget, if you have to cut seventeen million out of a four-hundred-and-seventy-million-dollar budget, there will be painful ideas and options that you have to consider. And so part of me thinks it would have just been brutal no matter what we did, but the, you know, and we're kind of on this discussion now and dialogue, which is great because this is what we need to talk about. I did feel like, you know, candidly, we let folks down, and it was not done very well in that we threw out ideas, and we all know, I mean, I'll throw it out, librarians, right? That idea was thrown out there, and it hung out there for a long time, and it caused a lot of stress among people. And yet I think for the board, that was a nonstarter, but it hung out there. And so I think, right, from my standpoint, we need to avoid doing that again because nothing good came of it. So that goes to the communication. How can we improve, right, in terms of, and again, these would have been painful decisions. And I just don't know how we would have avoided it if we really had to cut deeply like that. And we were all struggling with that. But how do we avoid that in this next budget process of us just kind of throwing an idea out there because it's great stress, you don't want to go there? How do we do that better?
Well, I think just for, from my perspective, we need to delay making those kinds of statements, and we need to focus on, here's the things that we intend to keep, and even those things that we say we're absolutely keeping, we also have an expectation that we're all going to share in trying to find better, more cost-effective ways to do them. But, you know, I think, and I appreciate that that was kind of the slant of our budget forums, what would you like to keep? What do you want to make sure we keep? And it was, we had some very healthy, you know, really rich discussions about that. But I think, yeah, I agree with my colleagues. It was very, very troublesome. I know you all felt it was just, it got people spun up for so long unnecessarily, and we got, yeah, no result from it. So I, I think if we're talking about specific programs and people, we better be really sure before we say that, that it's a, that it's a viable strategy and that, that there's, there's an appetite for it. Mr. Kelly?
Thank you, Madam President. I think something about this budget cycle that we're now kicking into gear a little bit more, the difference between past ones is that this will be the first one that is led by Dr. McNeil and staff. I mean, I know Dr. McNeil has been involved in many budget cycles in the past, but this will be the first time that she's kind of the lead. So it'll be, I think, interesting and exciting to see like what, what you come up with and what you and the staff come up with. And I might comment, just to, you know, be bold, let us know, you know, the shackles are off, so let us know if you have an idea. Let us know if you have any ideas or any strategies that maybe we hadn't done in the past, or we had thought about it, but it didn't seem appropriate, but you think that this time around it could be appropriate to look at? Because I'd just be, you know, interested to hear what you have to say on things like that.
Yeah. Dr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam President. Really, if I look at this, I had some of the same comments, in particular around, you know, what happened specifically with libraries and that concern and the angst that we all had. It's just a reminder for all of us that, you know, budgets are, every dollar in the budget in one way or another represents a person and having that mindset and as how we communicate when we let information out and so on. Because even though it landed in a place where, you know, it wouldn't have had board support, never got to that point, but if you're that person in that position, it really caused them a lot of discomfort. And so just being careful, I think as, as Vice President Raymond said, in terms of that, we all learned from it because it was, hey, it was just something that came, but it really caused a lot of that. And if we were in those positions of those, those hard-working librarians out there, we would, we would, we would, should we share that pain with them? And the other thing is just also for all of us to remember that, that budgets are moral documents. What we really believe in this district, what we really stand for in this district should show up in our budget and how we budget and the support that we put around it. So if we continue to make difficult decisions because we still don't structurally, although, you know, we got, we had a good session, but just going from one year to the next, we're already four million dollars in the hole, and we haven't done anything else yet. So still structurally, there is some more work to do. So every year, we have very difficult decisions to make. Let's just be mindful that their budgets are, they're moral documents, and they should always represent what we stand for as a board and as a district.
Can I, can I jump in too? And, and one of, I didn't mention it, but one of the thoughts we had in going to departments and having a dialogue, I think we're pivoting, right, this last legislative session did deliver more resources to schools. I mean, it, it did. The legislature and the governor stepped up, and I'm hopeful for next session. And so one of the things we are going to ask departments on, we know we are, we are either unfunding or underfunding a number of functions. And so we will go to departments in addition to saying, what can you do more efficiently? But one of our thoughts is to go to them to say, what are we not funding that we need to, like cybersecurity, you know, like our PC refresh program? We have zero dollars allocated for PC refresh, which is crazy not to systematically be replacing PC equipment. So we want to go to those departments to start, again, in the spirit of kind of pivoting towards, well, if we had more resources, where would we spend it? And coming up with a list of those items that we know are absolute necessities, then we can go to the legislature and say, yeah, we did balance our budget, but we did it kind of on the backs of some of these things that we're not doing, that we really need to. And if we don't do it, we're going to pay at the end anyhow. And so that would be one thought that, that we had that's a little different than past budget cycles. It feels good to be able to ask that in a way in that, right, it's not just cut, cut, cut. It's, well, if there's more resources next session, or if we can use that list to lobby, let's do that. And maybe, you know, this is good feedback for us, one of the items here is the budget survey and community forums, and what would that look like? And, and so I've talked to Samantha about pivoting those. I think we've gotten as much out of those community forums as maybe we, we're going to. And to go through the same discussion next February or March or January, I don't know how you all feel, but one of my thoughts is maybe we pivot it more towards, again, needs or, right, what do you want to keep or whatever, a little bit more towards that positive view. But, but I'm throwing it out to you for what you all think. I just, so I see value in those, but I've also kind of sensed maybe they, again, weren't as helpful as maybe the first round of community forums.
Dr. McNeil, and then I want to respond on that.
So just real quickly, I think also it's a fact of educating the public, but also our staff, our, our employees as well. And so we've put a lot of time and effort into making sure, so for example, this work session, it's being livestreamed. It was on the Monday message. The PowerPoint was, you know, distributed widely. And as you'll notice in the audience, it's standing room only, basically. But that's because our leadership team, you know, as a team, we need to be able to, to own this and make sure that the information is getting out to those involved. So all of our area superintendents, I see several chiefs, and I know that everybody has busy, busy days, but this is, this is one of your most important responsibilities as a board of trustees, and so we absolutely take it to heart and take it seriously.
Which we appreciate. Two things. One, I just want to make sure we don't fail to acknowledge the staff and particularly our, our budget and finance team that have brought forward innovative suggestions, ideas to help us navigate these very, very difficult deficits that we have been able to, to clear without, without horrible destruction of our academic progress. And so I just really want to thank you all, and I want to thank the entire staff because everybody has pitched in to, to make this work, our employee associations, everyone has, has helped us to get here to a structurally balanced budget, which is still insufficient. We will all agree that our budget is inadequate for the job that we are tasked with doing. We're very grateful for the increased revenues we've had, but we still are, we're climbing out of a hole every year, and we were able to balance this year, but as you said, next year, we're, we're back in the hole a bit. The other thing I wanted to say is that I think there's a value in the community forums, even if they don't produce new information. I think it's important for us to ask, the budget survey and the community forums, I think it's important for us to extend the invitation to listen, and it's also an opportunity to provide information to people. I think there were several times, I know one meeting that Dr. Taylor and I went to at a PTO, I think it was at Roland Melton, where we shared budget information, and we had, we had several people who came up afterwards and said, you have turned my thinking around a hundred and eighty degrees about the school district just by having the information. So I think there's value, even if we don't get, oh, the percentage has changed by this much, there's just so much value in listening and reaching out and making the effort to have the conversations with people and share, share the facts. And as we know, people have to hear some things over and over again, and I'm glad that, you know, Dr. McNeil and I were at the city council yesterday, and, and Vice President Raymond and Dr. McNeil will be at the Reno City Council, we'll go to the county commission, we're going to the chamber, we're going to EDON. Because the more people understand the facts of not only what we're dealing with, but also what we've done and what we're able to achieve with, with the resources that we have, I think it's really important. So I'm a vote for continuing to have budget survey and, and community forums in some, in some capacity. Yes, Dr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam President. I am reminded of that meeting we had at Melton, and they were very involved, parents with, came with their list of questions and, and so on. And it was really good. And it was really good dialogue. And so maybe they look a little different, you know, Mark, as you're saying, so it doesn't, we aren't doing that same kind of thing. But the reaching out is really an opportunity that really, until you made that comment, I was more like, yeah, Mark, I think we shouldn't have. But yeah, I mean, I think they served all of us well, really. And so maybe they look differently, different, and Sam and the communications team, Samantha, they did a tremendous job, as you said, in thinking the staff and putting them together and brainstorming around it. We had good involvement. People came out, they showed up on the virtual one, they emailed in. I mean, it was all of that. So kudos to the staff for doing that, that great work. But there's still a place for it. But I agree, it maybe should look a little differently, because we're in a little bit of a different, of a different place.
Any other comments by trustees at this point? If not, we'll go to public comment. Let me guess, Mr. Bailey? Welcome.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to say thank you to staff. I went through all the documents that were posted online, really professional job, easy to understand, went through almost every page and all the accounts. And so also staff reports. You know, I've been coming off and on to meetings here for about ten years. Staff reports and budget reports have greatly improved over that time. So thank you for that. Also, when it comes to this year's budget, you know, we've been dealing with these issues essentially since nine eleven, that I know of, maybe before that. But really, since nine eleven, then we had the economic downturn then, we had one in two thousand and seven, we had one in two thousand and eight, and it's really been a struggle since then. So you've all had to make very tough decisions, and the boards before you, and staff. And I kind of agree, I think we've really looked, we've squeezed the efficiency out of this as much as possible. And I will do my best, Madam President, to look for more, but honestly, I just don't see it. We'll come back to you if we find some. And I don't think that's going to change. If it does change, you'll have lower enrollment and not enough funds to operate at that point, or you'll be constantly dealing with growth, and that's never going to explicitly catch up with whatever you're spending in a particular year. So I don't really know where the equilibrium is in that equation, and nobody in the state of Nevada really does. But we'll keep trying. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. One other note, Mark, with the proposal for the legislature to do the parallel review of, you know, the existing formula and then the future formula, at what point will we be getting information about how that looks and how it's working if it were applied?
Yeah, great question. It kind of segues into our conclusion here, where again, we wanted to cover some major unknowns and a little bit more than what even Mike covered before, but you just hit it on the head. Headed into the fiscal year twenty-two, not fiscal year twenty-one, but fiscal year twenty-two, there's a couple of huge issues that could shake things up considerably for all school districts. One of them is the new pupil-centered funding model. We are supposed to be working, or seeing the current Nevada plan and that new model run parallel. As you know, I sit on the new Commission on School Funding, along with three other CFOs, and along with, I think it's seven other individuals on that commission. And that is one of the primary tasks of that commission. We are tasked, charged with delivering recommendations by July one of two thousand and twenty, which isn't that long that we have, right? And they're, right, and so our first meeting is September twenty-seventh. There is a lot to do with very little time. We haven't seen the result, we're less than a full quarter into the fiscal year, right? But we haven't seen those two models run concurrently. So that'll be really kind of one of the primary functions of the commission, is to hopefully get that data and start assessing, how does Washoe compare, new model to old? You know, how does each district compare new model to old? I think there's been a fair amount of misinformation or assumptions, maybe by other school districts, that Washoe's in the same boat as Clark, and may get a lot more money out of the new model. I can't say for sure that's the case, one way or the other. There were various iterations of a model that we looked at, with consultants that worked with the state during the session, and, I mean, literally fifty-five versions of the model. There is a lot to be decided and recommended by the commission, and then ultimately decided by the governor and the legislature in the twenty-one session. So they could, presumably, adjust the weights. They could look at this comparable wage index that tries to attempt to equalize, you know, labor rates among the counties. So there's so much that has to be done. But, to answer your question, by the middle of two thousand and twenty is when we're charged with having that information. It'll probably be a little late for this budget session.
Yes, it'll be too late.
But we'll see. You know, maybe there is valuable information we can extract along the way that will give us a glimpse into what fiscal year twenty-two might look like. And so again, you know, in addition to the unknowns we have for fiscal year twenty-one, for fiscal year twenty-two, things could look incredibly differently. And we know they're going to look differently by virtue of the new funding model, but we'll also be in the middle of, again, a legislative session.
And we will have an election in two thousand and twenty.
We will.
Which could change some things.
Yeah. So there are, and, you know, bullet point above, you know, a new strategic plan is something this district needs to prepare. So there are a lot of unknowns, which makes the fiscal year twenty-one budget process a little tricky. I will say in conclusion that I think, again, given where we're at in fiscal year twenty and the magnitude of the reductions, we kind of took an approach of, these are all policy calls. And board, here you go. I don't know that that approach works so well, to have seven folks try to struggle in public with, well, do I cut this or that? Again, maybe, I don't want to criticize anyone, I think.
Feel free.
Right? But I think it was a result of the magnitude of the cuts we had, and gee, these aren't just, to cut seventeen million's not going to be just efficiencies, it's policy calls. For this budget process, my hope is that we have a more bundled process for you. Again, you certainly, it's within your prerogative and purview to make policy calls, absolutely. But to have a little bit more orderly process for you, that comes a little bit, not totally packaged, but a little, given to you in a little different way, a little bit more logical, orderly way. So that's the other thing that I would kind of strive for compared to the last budget cycle you went through. But again, it was different circumstances than versus now. So I would throw that out to you as well.
I may have missed it, Mark. Did you all, have we talked yet about the, so the estimated, I'm back on page five, sorry. The estimated FY eighteen, nineteen, is the estimated actual? Is that?
No. That was our projection, or back when we prepared the budget. So at that time, we thought we would have a deficit in nineteen of four and a half million dollars. We will do better than that. And so we will start fiscal year twenty, right, when we have our CAFER done, our audited financial statements done. I'm confident we will start significantly better than thirty-five million dollars, which is what you see there.
But you don't have any estimates at this point?
I don't want to give you an estimate and then have to zig or zag while we talk to the state about some issues. So I'd like to give that to you when we have a little bit more certainty about the DSA true-up number and so forth. So, but we'll have more than thirty-five million, as you see there, for that available fund balance to start fiscal year twenty. We will have more than that.
Okay.
And we will be within the eight to ten percent zone.
Okay. And again, when do we expect to hear that? I mean, I don't think the board necessarily wants to wait until the CAFER is completely done to have an estimate of what that is, so we can be helpful.
So if you want a pre-CAFER number, I think, I'm hopeful we'll resolve our issues and put most of the numbers to bed within the next two to three weeks.
Oh, great, okay.
But again, don't, you know, there'll be a little bit of sway, one way or the other, but, yeah.
Okay, all right. Other questions or comments? Okay. Is there anything else that we need to go over at this point?
No, I would really just say, you know, again, if there's things we could do better, if you felt like the communication wasn't what it should be, you know, you could either indicate, you know, we could talk about it here, or you can email me, email Kristen, Dr. McNeil, you know. Again, we're trying to just do, you know, improve upon the process. So if there are areas where you felt like, well, you know, after I thought about it a little bit more, here's what I think, that would be tremendously helpful. And that's it.
Okay. Anything else? Anyone wants to add? Interim suit?
I would just like to thank Mark and Mike for putting the presentation together and making sure that the board has the information. And I'm not quite sure which team wins as far as which book is heavier, as far as the budget book or the data book. I don't know. It's hard for me to decide. But thank you all very, very much. Appreciate it.
Okay. Ditto. All right. And when will we be back for another budget work session? You almost got out of here.
Yeah. You know, if you keep asking, I'll have to throw out more football metaphors. Yeah. Well, we're in the first quarter.
I can take it.
We're in the first quarter right now. I think that really depends on you. I mean, our, what we'll start doing is scheduling meetings with departments and developing information to talk to them. And so we'll start doing that from October through January. We can certainly come back and officially report the fiscal year nineteen results, but I'm not sure we're going to have anything really meaty to share with you until after the first of the year.
Wow, okay.
But if you want to do a touch, you know, kind of touch base before then, we can do that.
Well, I think the, when we have fund balance information, it does provide some, it provides a goalpost, if you will, for us. Just a way for us to frame the challenge. That will help us with that. And I would really love to challenge the staff, again, given that we're already into September, we're several weeks into the school year, to have some sort of employee continuous improvement suggestion program, however you feel that it can be meaningful and helpful and contribute, not only to morale in the organization, but also to our many challenges. I would, I think if we let that go past November, we're missing an opportunity. I, you know, I see that being, like, within the next sixty days, we need to have something organized and rolling forward. Mr. Cottrell?
Yeah, I'll second that, just because once we get into the winter, a lot of the focus in the staff and the communities then be turned to feedback on the superintendent search. And so we want to be out in front of that and get feedback on the budget before we're trying to give feedback on everything all at once.
Great, great observation. And one more, kudo to the staff. I really appreciate how forward-looking all of this discussion is. You know, so often, we look at what's right here and the immediate urgent crisis that we have, and I really applaud the longer-term view that you all are taking. So thank you for that. Dr. McNeil?
So we actually do have the discussion on our agenda for executive leadership team for the employee-based program, as far as that. So that will be coming. And I'm wondering if maybe like late November, we would be able to kind of maybe partner with some budget update, but then also, maybe it wouldn't be such a bad idea to actually do a presentation on the employee program and bringing that forward, a little bit more robust conversation around that.
Great, okay. Anything else? If not, we will have any closing public comment. JJ?
Todd Bailey?
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to clarify some of the comments we made a week ago during September three at the end of the meeting. We covered a lot of things. So just thought I'd run through some of those quickly and clarify those issues. First of all, is there any association between Nevada accountability and myself and Tracy Davis or her attorney? And that answer is no, and there never has been. I was curious if you guys all did your homework and took a look at the Tracy Davis lawsuit? You know, her attorney has some very strange things to say in that lawsuit. First of all, he's kind of a conspiracy theorist, and I'm wondering if you're allowed to wear a tinfoil hat in the courtroom. Who are the members, for instance, of the DOESIV group at the district? I have no idea what he's talking about. Makes me wonder if there's going to be an alien ship landing at the federal courthouse. Who's going to tell us who that is? It's a weird case. Has the Washoe County School District Legal Office or interim superintendent done anything wrong since day zero, July first, or with regard to any events associated with day zero? No. Don't see any evidence of that at all. I know I mentioned both of you at the end of the last meeting. That's incidental, because your names are on some things, but that's about it. Don't see anything that you've done anything wrong whatsoever. Is the Washoe County School Board about to strip students of their constitutional rights with regard to detentions and arrests? Well, the answer to that is yes, and I'll be presenting that evidence to you. Has the Washoe County School Board done anything to protect Nevada's children's privacy that is collected on computers in the district? No. No plans to do so. In fact, there's going to be an expansion of data collection and expropriation. Now, with regard to the district's contract with KPS Three, there's two items. First, the contract is upside down. I'll be submitting an information request about that to obtain the actual dates and amounts paid to KPS Three. But the contract is legal. It was done under the process of NRS three thirty-two. But we can cut to the chase about this. Madam President, if you will just publicly state sometime during today's regular board meeting, that you quote, "knew and strongly encouraged district staff to engage KPS Three in a contract for twenty-five thousand dollars for public relations and to arrange media interviews in the termination of Tracy Davis," and quote, "that you knew officers of KPS Three were campaign contributors and bundlers, and everything was appropriate," unquote, that will end our questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Actually, that suggestion did not come from me. Anything else, JJ? Okay. Then we will be adjourned for our work session, and we will be back for our regular meeting at four PM.